We're going to call to order the May 3, 2022 council meeting held at the Harvey Room at 7:00 PM for Zoom. The phone number is 1-301-715-8592. And the ID is 8840-294-2834, pound sign. Call to order, roll call, please.
Councilwoman. Councilor Fusillo?
Here.
Councilman Munson? Councilor Belcham?
Yes.
Councilor DeMarco? Councilor Aiello?
Here.
Councilor Flahcutt?
Here.
Vice President Ruggiero?
Here.
President Luteri?
Here.
Thank you.
Please stand for the pledge led by Vice President Ruggiero.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united on individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay. Minutes have been circulated from the meeting of April 26. Do I have a motion to accept?
Motion.
Motion by Councilor Belcham, second by Councilor Aiello. Any discussions, omissions, deletions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the ayes have it. Let's see, public comment. Anything on Zoom?
Nope.
Anything in the audience? All right, seeing none. Correspondence, Denise, do we have any?
I received no correspondence.
Committee reports, we have no committee reports this evening. Town managers report.
Good evening, I have a short report tonight. Sergeant Botano will be receiving the top cop award in Washington DC on May 12, 2022. Myself and the deputy chief will be in attendance, will fly out that morning and fly back Friday morning. And that's it, and we got an incident which took place on June 26, 2021. Sale of land, there has been several requests for sale of land, one is on, several on Fawnbar, one on Sunnyside, and one on Veterans Road. I have looked and researched our town ordinances, which if it's under 30,030 would not be applicable, but our own town ordinance would remain applicable regardless of value. And 4-12-040 directly addresses the disposition of real property. And the town manager may request the town council to declare the real property be available for disposition and may recommend restrictions that may be placed on the use of the property. There's several, one is more complex than the other, it deals with several owners for one strip of land that is the town's property, which would include a subdivision, something that would not recommend the town subdivide, if we're going to sell the land, we should sell the land and other people can subdivide, reducing the cost to the town. So that's still under review. KMP is assisting with that review and will be hopefully moving and having a motion for disposition of at least some of these properties, if not all three, at the next meeting. And then it'll be the council's decision whether or not to dispose of the property. Once the council votes to dispose of the property, the town manager shall solicit proposals and advertise in two cycles of the weekly paper. And then, of course, we get the bids and appraisals and look at the assessed value that the assessors office as well and make a determination of what's reasonable for the town to accept. The blue spruce tree in Winter Precenta, we did get a correspondence on that from landscape architects, who do not recommend that we put the blue spruce tree in that area. Any type of Christmas tree, blue spruce or otherwise, would need much more green space in order to take and grow and mature. I have spoken to Director Cala, that should not foreclose our evaluation of that space and being used. There was stands that you can buy very large trees that can be placed there temporarily and still erected on the cement towards the back. So we still possibly could have something, there was also another area that Director Cala was looking at to put it there, it looks out of place and it's also not recommended by architects, landscape architects. So I did want to get back because that's a time sensitive issue, I wanted to make sure that we had that. Councilor Aiello asked about the water at the rink. Director Cala has researched this going back at least 15 years since he's been here, and he reports that they have never paid water, it's always been debated regardless of ownership for school or the town. You know, having said that, you know, we do have, during the project, we did run a water main into that building to have it separate because we were thinking about if we sell the school. So we're ready to put it on its own private meter. But again, who should be at the cost of that because there's plumbing involved? And that's going to be the question that we should, we should address here at the council, the town manager should address with council to determine who's going to pay for the plumbing expenses and get them on their own separate meter. And at that point, we can have a real true evaluation of how much water they're using in any particular year. May 21 is a busy day in Wintrop, as we said before, we have the spring fair, we have the police explorer conference, the Massachusetts Police Explorer Conference here, and at night we have the chamber awards. The town manager and I will be attending the chamber awards as well as both events. During the day, the police department will be giving out helmets at the, over by the bike rodeo during the spring fair, as well as paying for the tune-ups and supplies to have bikes tuned up. We will be putting out a link that people can pre-register for the tune-ups of their bikes and the repairs of their bikes and making sure they're safe for the spring to move forward. This is in collaboration with Bike Wintrop, the Parks and Recs, along with the police department as well. There's a fundraiser this Saturday at the Miller's Field for Winoc. Winoc is a co-host, Murray Special Foundation, Dear My Heart, my brother Michael had ran Winoc for some time, and the police department still does Special Olympics with them in June as we cook for them. So this is a special fundraiser for them, so I'd like everyone to come out and support Winoc. And the town planner and the MAPC will be coming forward with a motion to accept some zoning changes. Those changes has to do with flood mitigation and updating our zoning. So, of course, as a mechanism, it'll be presented to the town council, which has to refer it to the planning board. They have 45 days to review the zoning changes and make recommendations back to the council on the 48. If they don't do it within 45 days, the town council can act on their own. So just a little bit of process there. This is a time sensitive thing, so we're trying to get it on next agenda item because it ties into a grant that we're receiving, which needs to be presented to the council and needs to be in process by June 30. So we have to have substantial completion on that, and I think by hitting it to the planning board and having public debate at that level and at this level gives us significant compliance with that grant. And that'll conclude my report for tonight, thank you.
I have a couple of questions and I'll open it up, just on the holiday trees, we did get correspondence and I think, was it, trust it, from CBA Landscape, which was very thorough and, you know, I'm glad I asked and I'm glad I know now, they did give good suggestions though for holiday lighting and how we should do it, and I'm not sure if every, did everyone receive that? So we're going to get that, Denise, if you could send that correspondence, like a two-page report from the architects?
Yep.
And they talk about why not an evergreen and what other trees might be good and how a good way to do some holiday lighting. I did also want to mention that yesterday was Millerfield dedication, Miller, I'm sorry, tennis court dedication for Wallace B. McLean, a rededication. And I just wanted to thank Millerfield Committee and the SBAC for all their help in that project, and we were very fortunate that we were able to get that project done. So I just wanted to mention that. And also on the, on the rink, because that was, it's really important, it was brought up, I was told a handful of years ago by a CFO that that was part of the rink and that was being paid for out of the rink. But now, you know, we like transparency, like all the other councilors in looking at, you know, I think it's a discussion that we're going to have to have, not only on the rink, but on the schools and on the fire station, police station, library, and doing quick math and look at some of the numbers, it looks like approximately, and don't hold me to the penny, somewhere around $120,000, which is a lot of money coming from each department, and the effect on the rate payer is approximately, don't quote me, but based on 7,500 rate payers, it's approximately $13 and change over the course of a year for a rate payer. If not, you know, the rink obviously would just have to go up on their fees, you know, schools, $80,000, I don't know how they would, you know, that's a position and a half at least, you know, and it would have serious effects. So it's definitely a good discussion, but a discussion that we need to have coming up. And the last thing I have is the pavement, the holiday trees, and that's it. Anybody else have questions? Councilor Aiello?
Why don't we just stay with the rink for a second? I agree everything with the council president described, and from my perspective, you know, just take the school department, let's assume it's like 80,000, then...
It could be 75, whatever the number is.
Number X, then my guess is we would update that by giving them extra money in their budget every year, and then they have the dollars they've been spending anyway, but they have to sort of engage in water conservation. So in other words, if we, if they've been averaging, I'm going to use the number 70, and we just make their budget increase by 70, and they can figure out how to do water conservation, they end up only spending 50, they're up for 20 grand that they can spend on other stuff.
We just have to find the 70.
Well, it's already there, right? Because we're paying it, the town is paying it.
No, we're not paying it, the rate payers are paying it.
The rate payers are paying, but I would figure out how to get it on its own bucket and have everybody responsible.
No, it's the same, in the same argument, somewhere down the road on trash, true, with the town should pay for their trash out of budget, but again, it has to come from somewhere and it's potentially personnel.
On the rink itself, though, I think the only two uses up there at this point are the gym and the, and the rink, and so, is that correct?
Fox and Rec and the gym.
Fox and Rec, yeah, gym and the rink, and I would assume rather than spending the amount of money to split those two off, we could do, someone could do a back of the envelope to say, okay, two-thirds goes here, one-third goes there, and assign those and get fees. And then, if each one of them needs more subsidy, we provide the additional subsidy. But just to get, begin to get some clarity around here about the true cost of running things, and again, I don't, I'm not someone who thinks every enterprise fund has to pay for itself, it needs to be run like a business to minimize the amount of subsidy that's needed, but I think the sooner we can move in that direction, the better off we all are. So I would just encourage to look at that as opposed to any plumbing expense.
I know, and I've been in conversation with the director for the rink, who's adamant that the piping is so convoluted there, you know, everyone's assuming he's using all, because we all made the same assumption, because it was the rink and Fox and Recs that have the school program. But, so there's been conversation, but there's been, you know, some, well, points well made as well about the plumbing and the existing plumbing and where it's coming from, it can't be easily traced back to each organization. I understand that we try to make the argument of making these assumptions as well, and we'll continue to look at that.
Yeah, but there's nothing wrong with trying to approximate, right? So two-thirds, one-third, three-quarters, one-quarter, at least without the expense of an expensive reworking of all the plumbing and all that stuff. So I would encourage that discussion to happen. With respect to the sale of the land that's being proposed, my concern is we have a public right-of-way running along the bottom of those facilities and, which is a valuable resource for the town, you've got the Atlantic Ocean on one side, you've got the potential for storm damage and, you know, whatever, sea level rise, I don't know if it's going to affect there or not, but certainly storm damage. And I think it would be incumbent, as we're asking the lawyers and the planners and anybody else who's looking at this issue, to try to ensure that the protection of the right-of-way for pedestrians is maintained, the ability to modify it or enhance it, allow it to be reconstructed in the futures there. And it may be, again, I'm not an expert on, on sort of protecting a grade ahead of time, but it may be that if there's a desire for people to sell that land to the abuddies and maybe not sell all of it to provide some additional construction footprint for ourselves so we can actively maintain it in the future and not sort of be up against a private neighbor who says, hey, wait a minute, why is that, why are those pieces of equipment trespassing on my land? So I think there's a little bit of complexity there that needs to be thought through. And then the only other, well, two other quick things. At the last meeting, I just want to try to tie two things together, we talked about the MVP grant that the town planner is involved in and was going to make a presentation, I think, at the next meeting, is that related to what you just described, or is that somewhat different?
I believe that's separate, so the MVP grant she's working with, with the regional planners, so I will get a date for that, a separate date for that. The next one would be on the zoning, which is MAPC is working with her on that. And that's been in the works for a little while now.
It's just I've gotten a bunch of calls of people interested in the MVP grant and the climate change presentation, so I think to the extent that we can broadcast when it's going to happen in advance, which gets to a sort of a tangential issue, whenever we have, going to have special topics, special presentations, it might be good that at a meeting like this, if something's coming up the next meeting or two meetings from now, that we sort of say, hey, we're targeting this presentation for two weeks, because I get complaints of people saying, hey, I don't know what's happening until the Friday before the Tuesday, and sometimes I've already booked myself, and surprise, surprise, some people don't live to come watch us. They actually have real lives, so maybe we do a little look ahead schedule of any special presentations that are coming up to make it easier for the citizens. And then the last thing is, we all got a piece of correspondence from Mr. Demento, I always draw a blank on his first name, I know there's a lot of Dementos out there, Michael, about the use of the parking lot back there, and I'd like us to sort of, not sort of, I'd like us to sort of get an answer to that. One of the things I notice a lot is there's a limousine company that's there a lot, and I don't know if that's kids-only shuttling back and forth or whatever that is, but there's...
I'd have to look and see where they're parked, so we only own a certain portion of that land, and then the church owns six or eight spots.
Eleven?
Eleven spots back there, and they do rent those out. So we're going to look where they're parked and...
It would be helpful to get a diagram of it. The other thing that is, the signage isn't clear about what you can do in the evenings, right? Whether it's open in the evenings, it sort of says during daytime hours, but the sign doesn't say anything about evening, so it'd be good to have a session on exactly what the rules are around that lot, what do we own, what do other people own, and how does things change as you go through the course of the day, and are the rules different on the weekends and stuff? Just to make sure we're not taking, being taken advantage of by anyone, but they're parking sideways, I noticed, we did a kids-only event, they're parking sideways across three or four parking spots that look like they're in town property, but I don't know where the property lines are, so that would be great.
I think the church parking spots are but the church, right? Right in the corner, kind of? And I'm not sure if it's, I thought it was 11 or 12, but it could be 6 or 7, I'm not sure, but I know...
Is one truck there, there's a big sign that says, I'm parking for permission of the church, I don't know, you know, is that the church, please, not church, but I suspect there's a lot of informal use. I'm only worried about what we own and what the rules are, and is everybody doing it? And if, if people need to lease spaces, we'll lease some spaces if we can within the rules. So, all right, so it'd be good to have a follow-up on that. That's, those are my comments, questions?
Council Flahcutt?
To follow up on what Joe said about that property over on Fawnbar, I am also concerned about the maintenance of that walkway there, and they said in their original proposal that they would maintain that, but is that going to be in the contract with them so that we make sure that when they sell their house, that's still done?
Yeah, the walkway looks like a separate piece of property, but as Councilor Aiello said, he wants to make sure there's enough room, that we have to expand that or have another buffer or wall put up that we can, we're able to do that without encroaching upon private property. So we'll look at that.
That is prime for the ocean moving in on us there.
Anybody else? Seeing none, we will move on to school department report, which there has not been a school committee meeting since our last meeting. Old business, we have none. New business, we have a motion just to suspend Town Council Rule 2A of the Town Council Rules and Procedures and add a town council meeting on May 31, 2022 for fiscal '23 budget discussion or take any other action relative there, too. There is a possibility there might be one other agenda item on it, but the majority of this meeting will be budget discussion, will enable councilors to make amendments to discuss the budget so we're not having, you know, a cluster of the council, just a little, you know, frazzled maybe on a, on a Tuesday night when we're rushing to try to pass a $60 million budget. Do I have a motion? Motion by Councilor Belcham, second by Councilor Aiello, any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Councilwoman Honan? Councilor Fusillo?
Yes.
Councilman Munson? Councilor Belcham?
Yes.
Councilor DeMarco? Councilor Aiello?
Yes.
Councilor Flahcutt?
Yes.
Vice President Ruggiero?
Yes.
President Luteri?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, under new business, there was also a motion, well, there is a request to approve the retirement board's vote to increase the cost of living base from $12,000 to $13,000, and we will refer that to finance, that is something that they do on a pretty regular basis, and we will discuss that more in finance, so we'll ask for finance to get back to us prior to our next meeting, I have a meeting prior to our next meeting. Second round of public comment. Anything on Zoom?
Yes, we do. Okay, we have Karen Chavez?
Good evening, Karen.
Hi, Karen Chavez, precinct two. Last Tuesday night, after this train forum, I came home to find that my husband and my daughter had been experiencing some issues with a electricity line that was running from the pole to our house. It had dimmed the lights a couple of times, and the third time actually put the lights out and burnt out a couple of our power strips.
Surge protectors.
That were surge protectors. After I came home, I was sitting in the dining room, and it was about 9:00 or 9:30, and all of a sudden the whole front of the house lit up, not once but twice. So I went out and I looked and I could see that there was a, a wire that was smoking. I called 911, went to fire, responded immediately. They looked all around, they came into the house, they used a heat gun to be sure that the outlets that we were talking about, there was nothing in the walls, et cetera, et cetera. They also called National Grid, who came about 10:30 and replaced that line. I have already emailed Chief Wiley and I CC'd the town manager, Chief Del Hante, but I want everybody to know that I have all the thanks in the world to Captain Mike Lopez, firefighter with staff, and firefighter Pat Delaney for coming and just doing a great, great job, you know. You know what, me, I want them to get a new fire station. And you know what, when they come to the house and they behave like they did that night, know that they need a new fire station. My other thing, and I've talked to deputy chief about this, on my way down to the center on Friday, we went by the roller blade park, and it looked like an annex of the dog park on Veterans Road. So I emailed Deputy Goodman right away, and he got back to me right away and said that because there were no posted signs down there, that the police nor the animal control officer can do anything about it. He assured me that someone has made the attempt to get some signs made. Please, let's get some signs made. In the meantime, I heard from somebody else that the complaint about the dog park that we just spent $125,000 plus on, it's too small. You know what? I'm sorry. If you live on Lincoln Street and you have a dog and you're too lazy to go down to the dog park, stop using the roller park in our Ingleside Park. That is for the kids, not for the dogs. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. I do know the chief and I had a discussion about this, and we are in the process of having signs made for Ingleside Park. And I will piggyback on what you said on the, with the fire department, they are incredible, and we had a very similar incident at our house and a couple of neighbors where National Grid did come down, they replaced some transformer, not, not the actual transformer, but some pieces going to the transformer, said that they rusted out and there was a low power. But one thing that I did pick up for it that I didn't realize, because we had two surge protectors also, that just burnt right out, and I was never aware that you should replace surge protectors every two to three years, and I was informed by the police department and went out that day and went to Home Depot and bought a couple of surge protectors because it was at night and there was nothing else open. But I was not aware that you should change your surge protectors on a relatively regular basis, that they're not made for long stands, and so I do also thank the fire department for all the work they do. Any other public comment on Zoom?
Yep, Kurt Millar?
Hi, Kurt Millar, precinct two. I just wanted to touch on the rink one more time, and actually some additional water bills. I understand that the rink is the enterprise fund, and that we'd like to have all enterprise funds being self-sufficient, and at times where they go in the black, oh, to red, that yes, the town has to support it to keep it going, I understand that. But what I think needs to be really looked at for the rink is the private use, when they have private events, all that kind of stuff versus, you know, when the school uses it and, you know, charity events. So looking at what the water bill is for that one bill, it is substantial, it is a good amount that the rink should be paying for. And I understand the plumbing and everything is a little chaotic over there, it's crazy that the lines are already run over there, but I think the focus should not be at all on, you know, having, you know, we should have a timeline of when this should be wrecked by the time, so it's clear to everybody in the public. And then just scrolling through some of the other town vacant lines, we have multiple that only pay $50 per bill. And just going down, I understand, like the cemeteries, yeah, some of those are $50 every bill. That makes kind of sense, but then, you know, I scroll down and I see the DPW is only paying $50. So what it, the whole DPW building only has a $50 flat rate, there's no usage there, and I know it was a paid, and it makes sense, but seeing the usage on these, it should be a little bit more clear, I mean, is there a meter, is there not? So it's just a concern, I just, I keep digging into some of the budget by trying to see where everything matches up, and I just kind of don't find it anywhere. Thank you.
Okay. Any other public comment on Zoom?
No, we do not.
Public comment in the audience? Seeing none. We'll just go quickly over public relation, upcoming events, some of them that the chief already mentioned, May 4, which is tomorrow, National Walk and Bike to Work Day and School at Gorman Fort Banks. May 7, we have Winoc again fundraiser at Millerfield at 11:00 PM. As the chief said, again, May 21, Parks and Rec Spring Fair, craft show at Ingleside Park, and that evening, I believe, is the chamber event. And June 4, we always end with the rabies clinic, Winter Potatorium, front lobby, 10 to noon. Any public relations items on the council or any item a council would wish? Council Fusillo, Council Belcher.
I just want to say that the finance commission meetings are on Thursday nights, they are open to the public. Last week we had it on Zoom and we can do that again if there's interest. It's just a really important thing for people to be listening in on and paying attention to during budget season.
Very much so, they are open to councillors as well as the public. Council Aiello, Council Flakat, Vice President Rigerio. Wow, well, we might as well hang around for a while, it's only 34 minutes. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Vice President Rigerio, second by Council Flakat. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no, the ayes have it, meeting is adjourned.